Not really. We're all here. And we have with us our Chair of the Finance Committee, Paul Folito, and our Vice Chair, Jim Massey. Thank you for being here. There are no other N E S committee members. So, any public comments?
You will miss Paul and I.
We will.
We were turned out.
But that's but.
Well, you could read it.
You could be re- you could be.
I know, I was kidding.
Well, you might not be able to.
I'll probably get re- like. I just wanna get it on the record.
Just wanna get that out there.
Public comments, do you wanna?
I'll introduce our public. This is actually Mary Grace Ullahan. She's newest member of Inner West who's coming on to serve the town. She comes to us from Larksburg. You're welcome to say a few words if you'll.
Well, I'm happy to be here. I've been a civil engineer and lancer here for a lot of years. And a Bay Area girl, born and raised around here, so I live over in Danville. And I just most recently came, I was the Peloporos Director up in Larksburg for a little over three years.
Okay.
So, um, so I'm there with the budget process, excited to hear how things are gonna repair and excited to help and make a difference. So, thanks for welcoming me.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for making the trip in, for being here and welcome aboard. Our N E S chair will have a lot of future meetings together. All right. So, moving on to our first item of the agenda is the budget kickoff and we're gonna turn it right over to our Finance Director, Robert.
Hello.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all. This is the first budget kickoff and overview study session of our fiscal year sixteen seventeen budget process. Through the process, we were focused on, you know, our fiscal dependencies and the fiscal outlook for the town. As you all know, the major component is property taxes for the town of Atherton. So, the overview, we've, and you have your staff report. In the staff report, it explains in detail the overview of our sixteen seventeen year end rejected fiscal condition, which we will go over, major revenue sources in our five year forecast is in, was in the staff report, major expenditure categories in five year forecast. And we'll discuss the budget process and have discussion and then I'll conclude with the budget calendar, which is also in the staff report. So, as we're looking at the general fund revenues to expenditures, this kinda tells you at our, at our budget process, at the fifteen sixteen budget, we adopted a four point six million revenues to eleven point seven million in expenditures. And also, we had four point two million in transfers out. As the council recalls, we had some transfers out for O P E V, for workers' compensation, six hundred thirteen, six hundred thirty, six hundred eighty thousand O P E V and approximately six hundred thirty thousand in workers' comp. We had six hundred eleven thousand for capital projects. And we did a two point three million allocation that's for unidentified future capital projects. So, that's that four point two million that you see there. So, at the, at the fiscal year budget, the fifteen sixteen estimated, we estimated at thirteen point two million. So, that's an increase of about five hundred ninety eight thousand in revenue. Three hundred ninety eight approximately was attributed to the property tax component. The remaining two hundred eight thousand was other revenues. So, as you can see, this fifteen sixteen estimate, we had an increase of five hundred ninety five thousand. We increased expenditures by about fifty nine thousand, went from eleven point seven million to eleven point eight million. And again, there's the transfers in. The first two components of the slide, the budget and the estimated, do not include the E R A F and parcel tax. So, you can see that the over was three point, over under, it was three point four million in the negative. But mind you, we had a positive eight hundred and eighteen thousand revenue or expenditures in the fifteen sixteen budget. At the estimated, we're a positive one point three million. But you add in the transfers out, we're about two point eight million in the negative. So, just wanna kinda confirm that we're not in a deficit. It's just that the transfers out is part of the rollup. That's what it looks like. So, at the, if you include the E R A F and the parcel tax, we have four point, fourteen point six million over eleven point eight million. That's about two point seven million in net change of revenues over expenditures. Add in the four point two million of transfers out. And so, we're about one million four hundred thousand as a, we're over. So, at mid-year, we did make some headwind. So, we were at one point eight million, we're at one point four million. And just wanna kinda reiterate that, that we had an increase in revenues. So, that's where we're at, one point four million. So, again, we're not at a deficit. So, the major components is property taxes, we're at four point six percent growth. Parcel tax is still a, a revenue below the line, is still an important part of the, of the general fund. And E R A F, council's aware, we have an E R A F policy that was set in place that requires E R A F to be budgeted below the line. So, it's not dependent operationally, but at the same time, it's an important component of paying down long-term liabilities and maybe additional towards capital projects. That's the kinda overview of the sixteen, fifteen sixteen into the sixteen seventeen budget. So, with that in mind, our fifteen sixteen expenditures increased to eleven point eight million, about fifty nine thousand. Our projected fifteen sixteen ending fund balance is twelve point one million. And we calculated our emergen- our emergency reserve of one point seven million to our new calculated adjusted expenditures. Our twenty percent reserve is two point three million. And as you recall, last fiscal year, we created a five hundred five thousand capital facilities replacement reserve. And so, you, the total reserve requirement of four point six million of the twelve point one million, we meet our reserve requirements. And so, our, our unallocated reserve is seven point four million, almost seven point five million at the end of this fifteen sixteen budget.
Just a question. You, you said that the property tax component increase was about four point six percent?
Yes, to the budget.
You said it again?
To, to the fifteen sixteen budget, four point six percent.
Oh, so the estimate as compared to the budget is a four point six percent increase?
Yes, mhm, yes.
And how does that compare to what we, I think we got from H D L, but it's what in the staff report at page four would show the year-to-year increases in property taxes, mostly in the nine percent range, including the fifteen sixteen?
Right. Well, on the assessed value, it, it's the increase that, that we get. It's nine percent was the year-over-year, it's about nine percent each year, six point five percent was in fourteen fifteen.
So, that's really assessed value, it's not tax. That's the difference. It's a value versus tax issue.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, we meet our reserve requirements. At the end of the fiscal year fifteen sixteen, we're, we project to have seven point five million in unallocated reserve. So, in the staff report, we, we went over the major revenue sources and within the five-year forecast. Obviously, there's four major components.
One, can you go back to the slide?
Mhm.
About seven point four million, does that include E R A F?
Yes. It includes the E R A F component of that one million sixty six thousand that we received this year. So, it's in that roll, rollup of the seven point four million, which through the budget process, we will bring to council recommendations for that use of one million sixty six thousand E R A F. So, if you take that out, we're about six point five million, six point four, five million in unallocated reserves. So, on the major revenue resources, the four major ones are property taxes, which is about sixty five percent, seventy percent of our general fund revenue, revenue in the forecast. Building fees are about twelve percent of our general fund revenue. And parcel tax currently is about five percent to the P D operations. So, this fiscal year, we allocated twenty percent to the general fund of the parcel tax of one point eight million. So, that equates to three hundred seventy two thousand to the general fund. And in four.
Robert, if I could just go back.
Yes.
Do you know off the top of your head, or when we see this again, can we understand what the, the reserve, the equipment replacement fund balances are as well? Because they're used to fund things that are gonna be in budget. In fact, it's even, it's even mentioned in, in the, in the staff report.
Mhm.
Um, so if we can understand what those budget levels are, I think we need to watch those.
For the equipment, for the equipment.
And it'd be worthwhile for us to have those things identified. So, if you could do that, please. I think that would be helpful to all of us.
Yeah, and we will, we will cover that when we, in, I believe, um.
Operations.
Yeah, the operation budget, we will cover that, the equipment component. And then again, we will revisit it in our June budget session when we cover all the other additional ones.
Yeah, when we, when we're looking at what we're spending, I think we're gonna buy any, you know, different vehicles and things like that, we wanna know, A, it's coming from there, the money's already there. But B, this is what it does to the balance.
So, just clarifying, you're, you're talking about equipment replacement, like copiers and things like that?
Cars.
Vehicles, yeah.
Mostly vehicles, yeah.
And, and this capital facilities replacement reserve is for?
That was for the.
Building.
For building reserve?
Yeah.
Okay, so capital facilities, building reserve, yeah.
Right, that's the, the five hundred five thousand is for buildings, actual building component, physical buildings, uh, reserve.
Okay.
So, the, oh, sorry.
Just on, on revenue, we, we spend a lot of time on grants that we pursue. Do we, do we get them and where do we track them when we get them?
Um, we, we do get grants. We don't get major grants. That's something that we will, we explore as we, we see what's out there. The grants that we do get is like A B A G grants for equipment. Um, that's usually about ten thousand dollars, between five and ten thousand dollars. And we do recoup them into the general fund. So, there's a line item within the revenue that's A B A G specific for grants. Um, and usually, those are the grants that we currently get. Uh, other grants would be like D U I grant that we get money from the state through doing operations for D U I or click it and tick, click it ticket grants. Those are some grants that we get for operation that we get.
You're saying in total, it's negative, pulling out?
Well, I thought that the, the paving of Atherton, of Atherton Avenue, I mean, that's, that's substantial.
That's right. And that, that's in the street fund. And then right now, this is.
Show that in there, that's a grant and so we, but I think that's what, uh.
Right.
The Vice Mayor was asking.
Yes, sir.
That is, that is what I'm asking.
But it's not line item here as, you know, major revenue sources.
That was like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, wasn't it?
Yeah, but that's, that's not general fund. This is just specific general fund. So, when we do, when we go over the street revenues, other special revenues, we do like gas tax, measure A, or if there's a component where we get S T P funding, those do get brought into that fund under grant funds or grant revenues. And we do, we treat them as such. So, they, they come in as a, a grant revenue line item.
And that they're allocated to those specific funds within a specific project. So, the eighty thousand dollar grant that we just got awarded for Pacific Center project will show up in the capital projects fund for that project. And the twelve thousand we got for the electric vehicle charging station at the park will show up in the, probably the general fund.
Is there a way we can highlight that so we can actually see that and follow it? I mean, it seems that we're hiding, it's not really called hiding. But for us, we don't see that you guys are accomplishing these goals. And these are all things that are on our.
Yeah, maybe just have a chart. It shows all the grants that we received this year and all the ones that are in, that we're requesting, like Pike Pad and, and for, for putting in the stoplights and things like that.
Yes, and, and we do account for those. And you, as we go through the C I P, you'll see them in the spreadsheet. Um, the actual revenue that we get from, you know, gas tax or measure A and then other revenue that rolls into that fund that is specifically grant.
Well, we can highlight it better.
Yeah.
You can.
Okay.
Highlight them better.
Oh, I find my things are hidden better.
Highlight them.
Just, just along this line, will the funds that the fire district pays for the Almond, uh, Almond Road light be shown as coming into Atherton?
Yes. In fact, we did receive that check last week.
And would that go into the?
It's going into the C I P fund, right. The, the fund two, I believe it was out of two oh two or two oh one. I think it was out of the parcel tax. But it's coming in, in a line item that shows as reimbursement or grant revenue.
So, it'll re, it'll, we, we allocate, we budget for the entirety of the project, three hundred and fifty thousand.
The whole project is our expense.
Right.
And we've got a rev, we've, we've got a revenue line item, which is the district's participation in that, which is treated exactly the same as we would treat a grant.
Right, right. It's accounted for as a revenue. And then you can see it come in. And then expenditure component is all completely ours.
Well, we can do a separate capital, capital.
Really?
And then the E R A F is about eight percent below the line of the general fund. Again, we, that's a, a policy that was changed in the fourteen fifty budget. So, E R A F is not a operational, vital operational revenue component, but it is vital component for paying down liabilities or use for one-time capital projects. So, here in the five-year forecast, here's the revenue sources, five-year forecast. So, you can see property tax, building fees, parcel tax, excess E R A F. So, the sixteen seventeen revenue is about twelve point three million. As you can see, the property taxes, for, they're projected at four percent and to four point five percent. So, the first two years, they're at four point five percent for property taxes. The remaining years out, they're about four percent. And building fee, fees are projected at two percent throughout the forecast. And parcel tax is flat right now at three hundred seventy two thousand. But that's an co, a component we will revisit in June. Um, one, the allocation component to, to the general fund.
But that's the fund for the three offices.
Right. And the excess.
Two offices, sorry.
Two. Excess E R A F is one million thirty three thousand. As you, as recall, we received one million sixty six thousand this year. It's, you know, we're expecting, we'll just, we budgeted one million thirty three, seeing if, if there would be a reduction. We're not expecting a huge reduction. We're, we're not anticipating one, but just in case.
Oh, we used to budget seven fifty.
Right. This was the first, yeah, as operation, we used to budget that. And this was the first year we budgeted one point two million, 'cause this is the first year where actual E R A F has declined. Last five fiscal years, it's increased. It's went from eight hundred and twenty two thousand to nine hundred thousand to one million one twenty five. Uh, last year, uh, was a million one twenty five. And so, we have budgeted this year at one million two hundred thousand. So, um, again, we're just projecting it out flat ne, in the next couple fiscal years as one million. And we'll adjust accordingly as we see it every year of how it comes in.
First, I'll go back and use the, that Rick raised earlier, the property tax increase, the assumptions we have on that. I'm looking at the historic chart, most around more than I would've thought, by the way, in the years. Um, but in two thousand fifteen sixteen, we have been nine percent growth year-over-year. But for the very next year, we're assuming four point five percent growth?
Yes.
I remember there was, there was a profit impact, which had a big impact right after recession. Started after we started to recover from the recession.
Would that explain the jump from six point five to percent increase in I, okay. So, six, six point five in some ways is a more realistic figure?
Okay.
Great, thank you.
So, then, um, our other, uh, E R A F, as you said, we're gonna project it one million as a non-dependent revenue going forward, below the line. Other major resources, revenue resources are sales tax, franchise fees, business license, uh, planning department, and D P W, mainly that's approach and permits, park revenue at a hundred ninety six thousand and other revenue at four hundred seventy thousand.
I have a question. The other revenue category, I, in financial statements, I typically do not like other miscellaneous. And this, and, and this appears to represent twenty percent of the quote, other revenue sources. And it's undefined. What?
Right.
No, is there a way to clarify that or should it be?
You're typically more comfortable with other when it's smaller than the other categories.
Or, yeah, I mean, other is, other is bigger than, is double, more than double the park revenue which we're showing and the other one not showing. I mean, just give me the other revenue. I don't know what's.
Go ahead.
I'm just saying, you know, I know it's a hot spot to things, but just there's some other disclosures there weren't to what people were asking about. Grants and funds, pardon me?
It's a plug number.
It's a plug number, okay. I like those.
Okay, so.
So, I'm just curious, 'cause it, it is a significant component.
The staff report breaks it out, doesn't it?
Well, on that, I put it as other, when, when we see the general, when we see the budget, the general fund revenue component is broken down by different components, parcel tax, business licenses, uh, um, franchise fees, it's broken down within different categories. So, the other category is three categories. It's inter, intergovernmental. Then it's police revenue and the miscellaneous revenue. Which miscellaneous, if you look in our budget, we don't hide these items, it's, it's listed in our budget.
I'm not saying they're hidden. I'm just saying they're not disclosed.
Because there's, there's so many different categories. So, under miscellaneous income, it, you have interest income, you have the cell tower antenna, antenna lease in there, the play school is listed in there. So, of, of the other component, about three hundred and eleven thousand is that miscellaneous, which is interest.
You know, that's, that's all well and good, and I think this would be the close. If I was a council member and I came to one of you council people as a citizen, not being on the finance committee or seeing this said, oh, I saw this thing, I attended a meeting, I saw this category of other, what's in there?
No, and, and I understand, we put this in here because of, of the slide presentation, but we know what it is.
My point is, maybe it should be more disclosure.
Oh, right. And we do disclose it in the, in the budget.
Okay.
So, and I'll, I'll be happy to meet with you in the future.
One of the reasons, Jim, that we pulled those, and it's probably my and Robert's conversations, we pulled out sales and use tax, because it's changed in the last couple of years. Why not? Uh, uh, but I pulled these out for a reason.
I'm questioning what's in there. I'm just questioning the presentation of that as a category. Given the significant dollar sums relative to the others.
It wouldn't fit on the page. That's all room, it's not on the first.
Yeah, all the room, okay, we're out.
And the first question is, what is the largest component of other?
Uh, it, interest income, about ninety three million, I mean ninety three thousand. Um, and, uh, ninety three thousand, seventy eight thousand is the play school in about, um.
That's probably park.
Yeah, because it's gotta match with the park numbers that Steve Kyler sends out.
Right. It is within the park. We create a P and L to show that a park program that's within the park. But in the general fund, it's in the general fund rollup, the main component of the rollup.
So, here's some of the others. Robert, I'll read them.
Yeah.
But the answer to Rick's question is that the largest single component is ninety three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
If you had ninety three thousand, if there's a standalone item, it would pale in comparison to everything else. And it's just exactly what you said, others composed of a whole lot of different stuff. It's the second largest category out there.
And so, so play school, seventy eight thousand, antenna lease is fifty thousand. So, those three components.
But in the, I'm looking at Steve's numbers. I assume he gets them from you. And it says the revised budget for the things that don't include what you just talked about. The original budget was one ninety seven, six ninety one. But he says the revised budget, oh, this is two thousand fourteen, okay, sorry. The revised budget, recommended budget is two seventy seven, but the actual budget in, in fourteen was two, three twenty three. And the revised budget in fourteen fifteen was two twenty four K. So.
That's all revenue?
Yeah, it's all just revenue. And so, the one ninety six doesn't seem.
Well, these, these numbers are.
Doesn't match with Steve's.
No, and they're, they're different because they're for different purposes. The purpose of this slide, and when Robert and I talked about it, I said, business licenses, that's a big component of the town's revenue. Planning, that's a singular department for the town. D P W, another singular department for the town. Park is very important to the city council, call out what the park revenues are. Sales and use tax, that one went really up in one year and then backed down, so call that one out. Other, it's just miscellaneous. So, they're, they're categorized differently, just for the chart.
My only, my only suggestion, and it's a suggestion, is that the number that Steve sends around, since it goes to several different committees and lots of residents see those and some of them come to the meetings when we talk about the budget because they love the park, the number should match because they get the numbers that Steve sends out, which I assume they get from you. And the number that they're seeing here for next year's budget ought to be the number that's up there. It's not.
And it could be.
Oh, hang on. That, that chart is for park and rec and it's the profit and loss statement for the park. When you get to the operational budget, you will see that chart. This is an overview of our, this is a big umbrella picture of our budget. So, we're not going into the, into the weeds of that yet. That's the operational budget.
Funny word, it says park one ninety six, that I ought to see one ninety six here.
It, it.
It's different.
And the reason why we pull that is because of the, the, the park also, if, if you look at that, the. The park also includes Knox Play School because it's in the park. We put that in there because we wanted to show.
Well, I don't wanna belabor the point, all right? Maybe we go over privately, 'cause it doesn't have the Knox place.
But there's a policy, I mean, I guess there's, there's probably a policy decision that if we decided we wanted to include the revenue in maybe any expense, which might be, I don't know, contract expense or something related to Knox Play School, we could choose to put it in the park. Right now, it's in the general fund.
Right.
Uh, but, and, and it's, it's in the general fund up there, it's under other, that, that's what I understand the explanation to be. Is that right?
Right.
Robert?
Okay. Are there any other revenue sources that gen, are generated from the park that don't, aren't?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, but we rolled the tennis fund in there, but, but the tennis fund is its separate fund, as you all remember. It, it's, it's so, but it's put into this park P and L.
It's put in that park. And so, the tennis fund is in there as well.
So, so that could give you a mixture of what park.
When we go through the budget, let's, let's be mindful of that. Maybe we'll choose to push the play school stuff into the park.
It is. It, it is. On, on the chart, the bill was just talking about it, it does include the tennis and it does include the play school.
Right.
Um, can I just go back to your original, Jim's original? Can we just maybe in the future, if there's thirty eight items that are another, put thirty eight next to it, another, that'll be simple, we can stand it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Catch all of thirty eight?
Or have a backup chart.
It's in the budget.
It's a page and a half of line item.
I just want you to.
My estimation, it was privy to something that we didn't get there.
But I, I do have one question. If I'm looking at the, the right sum of numbers in the, in the budget document from the beginning of the year, the total budget for fifteen sixteen under other was three hundred and twenty four grand. So, how did we get all the way up to four seventy eight, more likely, what am I, what am I looking at incorrectly?
It's just, yeah, well, it, it should be intergovernmental category, police revenue and miscellaneous revenue equal that other component.
What can you break, maybe I suggest from the, if they're the three biggest components, break them out.
They are broken out.
Well, they, they're not on this slide. That's exactly my point. Somebody's gonna look at this and they're gonna say, what the, Mike, what's in there? And he's gonna go, blah, intergovernmental, I don't know.
They're used to hearing that.
Yeah. So, I'm not trying to cause a problem. I'm just saying, it's twenty percent of the thing. And I mean to pick on you, the civic, I couldn't have heard me.
Okay, so this is our forecast. They're all projected at two percent conservatively. Again, every year, we'll revisit this component and based off of, you know, where we're at in revenue. So, the, the government, the general fund major expenditures, five-year forecast would, this is a percentage of the budget. So, admin, about five point six percent, finance, four point six, building, ten point five. As you can see, as you go down, police is five point three percent and.
Fifty four point three.
I mean, fif, fifty four point three percent, sorry. Five point four three, I didn't mean that, fifty four point three. And D P W is fifteen point one percent. So, major components of the operation expenditures, we, as we're, labor cost is a big component. We forecasted it forward at three percent. Pension costs, that sixteen seventeen local miscellaneous, the normal cost is nine point zero five percent. Local safety is twenty one point two, three percent. O P E V, arc, we have unknown additional contributions as we go through the budget process. Um, that's why we put it as unknown, see if, if there's a possibility if we do make contributions.
That's over and above our typical arc.
Right. Operational expenditures, uh, this is everything that is not labor and salaries and benefits. So, it's forecasted forward at four percent. The calculus U A L this year for sixteen seventeen miscellaneous is a hundred forty six thousand, public safety is four hundred and three thousand. And so, within these, uh, yes.
Labor costs, what exactly do you mean by labor costs? I mean, pension costs is broken out separately, so what's, what's, what's in labor?
I mean, like the health, um, cost component, uh, workers' comp component. There's, um, retirement, part of that, salaries and benefits, uh, there's the Medicare tax. We have a unemployment benefit component that we put, that's part of that. So, within the labor cost, the salary, we, we project just three percent of that component going forward. But, and that's just for expenditure component forecasting. It's just three percent. We're taking whatever's a.
Is the English pension cost for me then from labor cost?
They are factored in that. Nine oh five is factored into the labor component. So, we're taking the total of the labor cost, whatever the, the total calculated labor cost is.
To include pension.
To include pension. We're just increasing it three percent.
But not including the U A L?
Right. The U A L is a separate component of it. And as you see further down in the slides, we have it as a separate item. So, we're just.
And probably does include workers' comp.
So, then the U A L is a hundred forty six thousand, public safety is four hundred and three thousand. These are the, the U A L payments for the, the town this fiscal year that we know of. So, major components of operational costs throughout the, the different departments within the general fund. Building contract, nine hundred sixty one thousand.
I've got a question, just for clarification. Under the building department, what does contract life and safety mean?
That's the, uh, building, um.
Building official, building inspector.
I'm sorry to hear.
Building official, building inspector.
Oh, okay. All right, that's what I thought it was. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
So that's that building con- contract component, this nine hundred sixty-one thousand is that.
Right.
MCE is the public works, maintenance, five hundred and seventy-six thousand. Public works director component, a hundred eighty-seven thousand. Park event services, that's the catering, uh, by Dana component, eighty-five thousand. Uh, planning services, a hundred ninety thousand, legal services, a hundred fifty-four thousand. So those are major component costs within the general fund. So the operational costs, as you can see, this is, uh, assumptions at three to four percent per year. They're not including salaries and benefits, so this is just operation costs to include professional services, technical services, uh, other contract services within each department. So as you can see, uh, it starts out with four point seven million in sixteen seventeen, by twenty twenty-one is five point five million for the total general fund operational costs. So there's a couple of town policies that we will discuss when we go through the budget, so one is the parcel tax policy. Determine the amount of the tax revenue of the parcel tax and the allocation towards municipal services. That'll be done in our June first study session. So again, as we recall, we, we, the allocation is twenty and eighty percent, twenty-two, uh, police services and eighties to capital projects. The ERAP, ERAP policy is one policy also that we need to re- review. Uh, that's the one-time revenue, we received one point zero six million this year. And we will come to council with, uh, opportunities either paid towards long-term liabilities, capital projects, or specific one-time projects. And the other policy would be the unallocated fund balance, uh, whether it's allocate a percentage or, um, a portion towards the CIP or any lo- other long-term liabilities. Or a possibility is maintain a set amount as unallocated, uh, reserve. This fiscal year budget, we maintain five million in unallocated reserve. Uh, so we'll revisit that, um, that's what we wanna do with that component. So as, as you can see, here's the summary and forecast.
This is the one that scares me.
Right.
Oh, this is the scary slide?
This is the scary slide.
Yeah, this is the scary.
So if we take the, the major.
There does.
The red is the expenses, the component. So if you take all the major revenue that we talked about, which is, uh, property tax, ERAP, building fees, uh, parcel tax, and then the other revenue of, of the two point five million, so you have thirteen point five million revenue minus the salary and benefits and of seven point five, operation expense of four point seven. And then there's the UAL component of the miscellaneous and safety, five forty-nine. So we have a positive seven hundred twenty-two thousand forecast in sixteen seventeen. You put in the parcel tax and the ERAP, uh, and we have a net fund balance of two point one million. So again, these aren't re- actual budget expectations year over year, this is just a forecast on cer- certain assumptions. And again, this is what George was alluding to, so if you can see in sixteen seventeen, we're at seven hundred twenty-two, our balance, seventeen eighteen is six hundred eighty-two thousand. Eighteen nineteen, five ninety-three, nineteen twenty-four, ninety-eight, so as you, as we progress, right?
Probably, they put this in a line chart, you know, those two lines may get some point confused.
I've been there, done that before, and I don't wanna do that again.
Yeah, but it's all, it's all in that UAL.
It's all the UAL.
It's all in the UAL line item. I actually. Starting to defy imagination that we keep giving them more money.
It is a matter.
And our liability continues to grow on an annual basis, there's something amiss, I'm not an actuary, but something is not right.
It's the, it's the five-year catch-up that they've done and the rate increase of one point one percent area is smoothing exactly.
Yeah, but this is the second time we've had a five-year catch-up, this is the issue.
No, the first one was in the nineties when they made us pay off our side fine, that was years ago. This is their oldest scheme, yeah.
Yeah, I know, it's a talk about last year.
So it's, so it's one point one percent the first year, and then another one point one on top of the one point one?
One point one.
It's an aggregate.
Two point two, three?
Yeah.
Okay, then, then I understand. So in theory, we should be done in nineteen and twenty, that's the end of the five years, but.
And then it ramps back down, so you're right, it ramps up.
Well, it's done a very good job because it ramped up again.
You don't really believe that, do you?
I was willing to put money on that.
Right, and the other reason it's probably still going up is they also changed the, uh, longevity issue.
Yeah, mortality.
That played a part of it too.
And they'll change the allocation, so there, there's, there's some risk mitigation measure that they're, they're gonna implement.
The, the things that scare me in this slide is what if ERAP goes away, uh, entirely? What if CalPERS decides, okay, we're, we finished the smoothing, now we're gonna lower our discount rate from seven point five to seven point two?
Well, you just did that.
We're just a good.
Well, they could do, they could do it again, whatever those things happen, and that, that's why it scares me in those areas.
They're doing it every time.
But then we've got a parcel tax that lapses.
And.
Right.
And we're assuming that it's renewed, I'm not sure that that, I, 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 that doesn't feel exactly right to me.
Correct.
That's why you see they're below the line, that way you can see, and George says it, if those things go away.
Hold on, shall we use three seventy-two?
Yeah.
Or we'll try and three seventy-two?
It's below the line, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so any more?
But my, my point is, uh, if you just go on the status quo, we know that unless something changes, that'll go away.
Yeah, and that's the, that's the first over-under line there.
But I think Mike's point is well taken, I mean, based on what we voted, it actually does go away, so we probably shouldn't show it. Pass where it's been voted.
Good.
Should at least be footnoted.
Yeah.
Yeah. Footnoted, that's a good idea.
Well, I might go beyond that, I mean, I, I, I think the voters told us something, we haven't gone back and gotten them to change that.
No, what, I, but.
So, what kind of assumptions can we make as a body here, assuming that, that we are gonna, you know, do something that the voters have approved yet, that's what that would be.
Well, we.
I just, but let me just, it's like the voters didn't tell us it's only a four-year.
Go ahead.
I mean, that's all that we ever, um, are allowed to pass the parcel tax for, is a four-year, uh, period.
Renewal, right.
And since nineteen seventy-eight, every four years it has passed, except for two times when the council kinda was asleep at the wheel in two thousand four, and it didn't pass by a small margin, and we had to go back out in two thousand five at a special election, and we passed it, you know, at a large margin. So, I mean, it, that was in two thousand five, that was the first time I worked on the parcel tax, two thousand five.
But it could be made for longer than four years, right, and that's not a law, isn't it?
My understanding from the.
It's a law.
It's a law.
You can only do it part, is that a special tax?
Yeah.
Yes.
You could make it part of the general tax without a limitation?
But you, you.
I, I'm not sure, the, the, the whole concept of general tax, the, the legislature kinda hands us what we can do. Um, so to do anything beyond that, we have to go out and ask the voters it's a special.
Well, I know we have to ask the voters.
Well, so, yeah, so I'm not a lawyer about this, but I've gone through this three times now for a parcel tax. And, um, it requires two-thirds of vote for the parcel tax, which is a special tax because we say it's gonna be used for two purposes only, okay?
Right.
And, and if it was a general tax, fifty-one percent. But then it just goes into the general fund, and who knows what we'll spend it for, you know, who won't, you know? But, so we say it's for police and, uh, streets, right, okay?
Streets.
So, and the residents, we want to support the police, they want to support puddles.
Right, but, but Mike's point.
Good idea.
But Mike's point, which I, which I actually think is exactly right, is we've only voted it, I don't know whether it's through twenty sixteen seventeen or s- twenty sixteen seventeen.
Puddles are a good thing. To fix.
Twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen.
And, and show, wait, let me just finish, showing it for the other four years, um, doesn't show the impact
But we'll have to go out next year. Right.
of what would happen if we didn't have it.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, as I mentioned, that's the over-under line.
It's under the line.
Seven twenty-two, six eighty-two, five ninety-three, that's the impact without ERAP and without the parcel tax.
So we're not counting on it to manage all of our operations, it's under the line.
But, but I think what Rick's point is, is after nineteen, it's not there, so why, why do we have it?
We have it because, the jurisdictions will typically say, you know, we have a, you know, utility users' tax. It sunsets in twenty twelve or twenty seventeen or whatever that might be, but we're projecting that that continues. Cause these are just projections. The only budget year that's in here is our current budget year, sixteen seventeen, at which we actually approve a budget. The projections are just.
I think we're trying to, we should ac- actually have like a little aspect on the future years
Yeah.
Footnote. Yes. Yeah.
With a little footnote that this is assuming it is renewed in, uh, next year.
Right.
But all the other numbers are projections as well, four and a half percent property tax, so we're projecting certain raises and, and benefit costs going up
Right.
That's right.
We all know.
Yeah.
Right.
And things like that, so everything in this is a projection.
But I think there's a fundamental difference, I mean, we are, we are, most of those things are, are taking the status quo and assuming them out. In this, in this case, we're not, I mean, if this thing goes away unless we can, we, the people, the voters, take an additional step. So, I, at the very least a footnote that says that's, that's required is.
Yeah, I agree.
Good, okay.
Yeah.
I think that's important.
And when it does get renewed, so that way, when we look at it. Good, okay.
We can know when it is, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
I, I have an additional concern, uh, to, just, we talked about this in the finance committee, because we sent six hundred and forty thousand dollars to equalize our workers' comp situation. And that was to supposedly cover a couple of major accidents the police department had, et cetera. But I see in here, we're talking about a thirty-three percent annual increase in this fund to address and maybe current situations. Is there anything we can do about that? I mean, that's huge. I mean, you know, that, it's a lot of money.
Well, our assessment this year was a hundred eleven thousand to safety.
Right, I, I'm just concerned about the rate of increase. I mean, you know, that effectively doubles it in three years.
And, and we can eliminate that by making an allocation to do the same thing we did the prior year.
I just, you know, we, I know we talked about it in finance, just wanna bring it up, thank you.
Yeah, that, that number came up, you know, I spoke to George, and, you know, of course, we're, and he, I don't know if you, maybe you can go through with that, but. You know, we're in a small population of other cities that we're lumped together with, and some of them have police departments and some of them don't.
Right, right.
And, and, uh, which actually is a good thing, if we were in with, say, uh, East Palo Alto or, you know, Daly City with a bl- large police department and, and they, they have more, and then our allocation to just help cover and be part of it would be greater, but it'd be good for you to maybe talk to those guys.
I, I was just looking at it from a macro level, not specifically thirty, thirty-three percent, it's, it's like the other thing, it just leaped off the page at me, you know?
It's just a big number, it is, I agree.
Yeah, I think so.
As I was reading. Some of it's as bad as the CalPERS.
Yeah. Well, I, I took a brief look at this and I, because I was involved with an insurance, a self-insurance group as the ch- as the CEO for, I was involved a long time. Um, it appears to me, and I don't know this, but I volunteered to get involved if you want me to. It appears that, quite frankly, it's not very professionally run. The, the premiums that we pay appear to be somewhat arbitrary, pulled out of thin air, they're not actuarially developed that I can see. And so when the police department, uh, has a lot of problems, which apparently we've had, um, an actuary would change the premiums. He'd say, hey, you guys have bad loss histories, and you're gonna have to pay more than the guy next door who has no loss history. But it doesn't seem to be run that way, so as long as we continue to have accidents, we're gonna, we're gonna have fairly major assessments, and that's just something we gotta live with until we have good years without accidents.
Yeah, they, they set, as I was explaining to Councilmember Woodrow, they set a reserve, let's say we have a plane, officer or somebody gets injured, we have a claim, it's a, it's a major claim, not a medical claim. So it's fifty, a hundred, two hundred and fifty dollars worth of estimated future costs. The Cal, Cal City's JPA then says, okay, you gotta pay that, we're liable for those costs. We're gonna spread that cost though, over a five-year period of time and raise your assessment, which is basically your premium. If we have two, that same thing happens, it gets spread over that five-year period of time, but we're only catching up for that one year, for that five years. We have one the next year, it just adds to the, to the annual cost in the future years out. So if we, eventually they're gonna get to the point where they'll say, the premium's gonna go up, because that's not only paying for your current claims, but that's also gonna set a reserve, so you keep that moving forward. We're just trying to keep that reserve at, at a certain amount and keep our operational costs down because of it.
The only study that, you know, I think would be worthwhile is, is if, in fact, we were to self-insure, really self-insure, that would be something to understand what we think the cost might be, or if, if it was possible to change our, with, and, and be in different organizations, with different organizations, you know, perhaps, you know, if we could move around, it might, it might be something that, that could be considered, but.
They probably wouldn't want us because we'd drag them down, or drag them out.
Well, we, we would, we would.
Oster said he's got a three-year mark.
We wouldn't want to until we have several good years, if we've got a, a, a decent loss history for a five-year period of time, then look, jumping ship to some other insurance group. But right now, we looked at it in January of twenty fifteen, brought through the council and discussed it, uh, and it wasn't worth changing, it would be more expensive.
But in essence, we are self-insured in that we're paying every dollar of our claim. One, a totally separate issue is, what are the operational costs to run this joint JPA self-insurance thing?
Yeah.
I mean, I know what the costs were in the company that we had that was professionally managed, I could compare them to, and maybe they're ridiculous, or maybe they're really cheap, and so that part's not an issue. But the bottom line is, if we're self-insured and as long as we have claims, I can just tell you the base premium that we're paying on an annual basis for a police department with what, twenty-eight officers?
Mm-hmm.
Something like that? It can't possibly be anywhere close to what we'd be charged by a third-party insu- a, a real insurance company.
With the state insurance, it would be about three hundred and fifty thousand a premium, that we want with the state.
Yeah.
I would have heard it was a real insurance company.
Want to be by the same people that do CalPERS.
We have a, we have a, an unusual history of losses here, I mean, is this, should we be looking at that, like what's going on, why?
It's not unusual, it's just a small organization and they hit at the period of time, we had, it's, it's lumpy, yeah.
It's lumpy.
Yeah, that's a good. You have, you have two, for instance, we had, uh, two officers who were, uh, rear-ended by another car, and that took both of them out. We had one officer chasing a suspect, that took something out, and these aren't, these aren't loss or risk management issues, they're incidents that occur.
Well, when they, when they got rear-ended, shouldn't there have been some sort of insurance payment from the person who rear-ended you?
Yeah, we, we try and get that back.
So actually refunding what we have to pay for those two officers, including if they were there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and again, to throw to my question, wasn't about the expenses, it was about, we need to take, maybe we need to take a look at this, and I think Bob pretty much said that there.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, thirty-three percent jumps off the page and so on.
That's true.
So, going, uh-huh.
So this is just the discussion, yeah, this is the end, so our operation budget will be here May fourth.
Mm-hmm.
I'll be the general fund specific, um, capital improvement budget will be May, council meeting May eighteenth. Then we'll have another buddies, bu- budget study session June first, that will be all the funds, and then the document on June fifteenth.
Great, nicely done, thank you, this is very well organized, it's, isn't it, laid out? You can target it, it's giving it to us in little bites, so we can digest it a bit and, you know, think about questions, think about policies that we may want to, uh, ask them to implement, and I think that's great, thank you, Robert. Any other questions by any of the council members?
Why do you always show Lindenwood instead of Hart?
I know, I, I'm gonna get a new picture.
It's a better picture.
And then you show, and then you show the, the train station, the train doesn't stop.
I, I.
He do, they do show the train station, yeah, I said.
It's, it's got a little app, app.
I think, I think we should have a photo contest.
We really have to keep moving on, because I.
We're gonna go back to the photo because the council changed.
We're gonna discuss, uh, we have, um, we have a, the next item on the agenda is, uh, gonna be given to us by city manager, and I think we have a, um, decenter.
We do, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, uh, as you know, I've been kinda talking about, uh, Mr. Abers', uh, opportunity that he's presented to the town to, uh, engage the community in some senior programs and services. We don't have the staff resources to do that on our own, uh, so Steve came and said, hey, I, you know, I'm interested in this sort of activity or program. Um, and I don't quite have all the details yet, you can toss it out for some brainstorming with the council. I have written the council and the staff reports on ideas of what Steve and I had talked about. One way to partner with the town, uh, is through a designated group process, uh, there are other ways. Uh, and Steve's also free to do this on his own without the town, uh, participating, uh, formally. So Steve's here this evening to kinda give some, some parameters to that and brainstorm a bit with the city council.
Okay, Steve, you're up.
Thank you. Is it okay if I sit?
Sure, yes, uh, yeah.
Thanks, thanks, council, thanks for seeing me, thanks for hearing me out. Uh, so I actually have chatted to a couple of folks here, council members, uh, and George at Moreland. Um, so the first question is why, you know, why do you want to do this? I, I don't have any other motive other than being an, uh, an aging, out-of-term resident, and.
Are you speaking personally?
Yes.
No, don't believe that.
Well, it's true, we live here, we're aging here, we wanna continue to stay here, so that's, that's the motive, it's as simple as that. We don't, I don't have any ties, connections, ownership in any elderly housing, uh, or any other organization. We don't, I don't have any ties, connections, ownership in any elderly housing, uh, or any other organization. We do have experience, so I apologize about that, we, we come from that background, so I can't go away with that. You know, I can say, you know, won't influence a lot of the decisions. So based on that, my motive is to, uh, work with the town and see purely as a discovery effort how much interest there is. And I'm not being prepared to do this if the town wants me to do it as a partnership or even as a town endeavor. I'm not sure what kind of form that'll take, and I understand, totally get the fact that, uh, there's no, you know, huge labor available and budget and, uh, you can't just say, oh, fine, you know, we'll do this and plenty of, uh, resources available, I understand that. But, so, my suggestion is it's, is started as a purely investigative effort to see in fact how much interest there is and what the form it will take in the, in the future. So part of what I'm doing here is I wanna just see what kind of interest and feedback the council has briefly.
Thank you, so could you just paint a little picture about your vision, you know, um, if, if everything was, went exactly as you dream about, what, what would it look like?
Yeah. So, so we went from the why to the what, right, like, what is it?
Mm-hmm.
So you know what the short answer is? I don't know.
Mm.
Yeah, the, the vision is a swimming pool with a bunch of old people lying around, you know, doing exercises and joining the civic center and, uh, participating in social activities and socializing and getting together. That's the vision, but more realistically, I think the vision is, um, just creating a group to allow folks, to share ideas, to grow as a group, uh, participate directly in that group. So it becomes a group of the members itself, the town being directly connected to the group in whatever shape or form that is. So it's not a disconnected group where we go off and do our own thing and every now and again, you know, raise our hands saying, hey, uh, there's, you know, seven hundred and thirty-two of us now, we're getting to be a pretty serious group, so we need to, you know, create something formal as a relationship. So one of the, I think one of the first questions will be at, uh, answered is, first of all, how many folks there are in Atherton over sixty-seven and a half years old? Because as I understand it, do we have the answer to that? Because that was one of my first questions, does anyone know the detailed demographic of Atherton, if I may ask?
You can, you can get it from the voter registration, uh, records pretty much, but there are, there are a number.
I thought that was confidential, though.
No.
No, 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 no.
No, totally available.
Totally available.
And so, but, but there are some, there are some dates that go back, that are like, you know, uh, one thousand or something, you know, that are, that are fuzzy, so.
Voter regi- I understand.
You, you, you can take the voter registration material and sort it.
Mm, sort it in lots of different ways.
It's just data and, and there's a field that's birthday.
Yeah.
So how many, what percentage of that represents the total population of Atherton?
What's the voters, yeah, it's.
Yeah.
The voters.
Which is.
Which is what?
But how many, there's like five thousand, uh, on the.
There's like five thousand, five thousand in the thing and there's, and there's some, you're, you're missing two thousand.
On the, on the voter registration list, yeah. A couple thousand, because.
There's seven thousand.
So we're looking at what, like, sixty, seventy percent of all, total?
Yeah, so, are you kind of envisioning something like La Viendas, Aviendas in Palo Alto, do you know that organization?
More than that.
Seventy percent? Avenidas?
Avenidas, yes.
So that's part of my knowledge, by the way, my background is working with folks like that.
Oh, okay. Okay, uh-huh.
And you touch on a group that.
Because I've been involved in a lot of their programs, you know, over the years.
So we would be able to switch you to ASAP, by the way.
Yes, I'm, well, I'm going back a long time.
There's a, there's a motive right there.
I am.
You wanna have to cross two borders to get to your senior center.
Yes, okay, but that's kind of the model that I.
That's the point, right?
Yeah.
I mean, you, you hit on Avenidas, which is an, a Palo Alto town sponsored group.
Uh-huh. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
It's their senior center, which, uh, Atherton does not have.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Am I wrong about that?
No, 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 you're right, she made Palo, Palo Alto, Palo Alto has like, uh.
So.
I just, I just saw you s- Okay, so let's play on that, so you have Avenidas, which is a.
Little house at, little house at Menlo Park.
It, now you've hit on yet another group, though, so Little House is a peninsula volunteers organization sponsored by Menlo Park.
Yeah. It's a peninsula, yeah. Peninsula.
We don't have a Little House, we don't have an Avenidas, we don't have a Veterans Memorial Senior Center, which is, uh, in Redwood City.
Oh, huh, had it been that way.
No, I'm just, we're, you brought up a group and now I'm, you asked me, how does this play into Avenidas?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's it right there.
Similar, yeah.
Similarly in terms of, you have a town-sponsored group that is very successful, vibrant, you have direct knowledge, as I understand, are you a member of that?
Uh, no, I mean, I used to live in Palo Alto years and years and years ago and, you know, uh, even when I moved away in the nineties, I, you know, I've gone to lectures and things there.
And as I understand it, it's self-funding, by the way.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's, it's a very vibrant, yeah.
So therein, therein lies, I think, a good vision.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Carrie.
Thank you, uh, well, first of all, I wanna thank you for your efforts with seniors and so on and so forth. I'm gonna probably say, I mean, I'm gonna express, I mean, this, this is a building of a relationship, in my opinion, and thank you for stepping forward.
Thank you.
Um, but with that, I wanna also say some of my concerns as a council member, um, age, aging population's a very vulnerable population. And we've gotta sit over here and make decisions about who we build relationships with, so we gotta build some trust. Because, in my opinion, uh, having the town's name on something is almost an implied endorsement of what you do. And since we really don't know each other, we still have to build that relationship. And I think that we can probably work together to build that relationship to reduce our concerns on our side because we hear stories and, you know, this is not a program that we have the capability probably to handle internally without building a good amount of staff, because larger cities will have staff to handle things like this. And to have a volunteer that's willing to take forth an effort to help us do things that we wish we could do realistically, we wish we, we just went through the budget. We wish we had more money that we, we could do.
I saw you don't have much, yeah.
Yeah, and so, what, you know, with people like you, I mean, that's exactly how we can make things happen.
That's declining.
Yeah. Yes.
Because frankly, it's a labor of love and, you know, obviously, you know, it's a labor that you have to enjoy, just like people here enjoy the park, the arts and so on and so forth. Um, you've obviously hit a target that we're all concerned about, we're all gonna be there someday and, you know, we wish that we could age them up. And some, some. So, you know, I, I, I think that, uh, you know, in my opinion, I, I, I really do support the fact that what you are doing and with, work with us. You know, and I know that there was some talk, we don't really have any programs or any, I, it's kind of a potluck right now. But I think that, in my opinion, I'd love to, you know, be there in the monitoring portion of it to how, how, we don't know how this will scale or how the demand will be. But I think in my opinion, like, I mean, our oversight and coming in to figure out how we can build that relationship will build the trust barriers that frankly, you know, as we move forward, you know, options as well, so.
Carrie, what's your vision?
Well, I know I'm getting old and I know that I have to deal with a parent, you know, I, I empathize because I have to deal with a parent that is aging in place right now and I'm close enough to her that I can be there to help, but in some, at some point, she may be with me. And so I know that, so I would absolutely be looking at somebody that would have the knowledge in an area that I have no knowledge in at all, that could help me with tools to help me bring a parent in to age in place in my house, so, you know, uh, because when things happen, it's happening. And you're in, you know, you would have the ability to have an instant resource that may take six months or a year, but when somebody's dropped in your lap, it happens then. And, you know, I didn't have to go through Google or, you guys, with mobile computer, but I'll probably go through the phone book, if they still exist, um, to find resources to help me. So.
Yeah, just, they do have phone books, they, they just throw them out and everybody's got.
No, they put them out in the air now.
So I do, I do, I do know that there is a population in this community, uh, that do have, we all have parents, uh, but those parents that do, we've tried to figure out how we can and we have people that, that are, I'm, we're gonna be having a hundred-year-old birthday coming up with somebody here in town on Saturday.
Yeah.
And, uh, those kids are dealing with a mother that's a hundred years old, aging in place.
That's a lot of things. Yeah.
And, um, you know, how, how could you help us help, you know, if I become that person? You know, that's really, you're a conduit of information, how can you help me type of thing.
Okay.
So I'd see that as a matter.
Right.
Any other council members?
Yeah, I have a, a couple, a couple of comments, um, so I went through the staff report and I see that a lot of the information came from you, um.
Okay, go.
Yes.
I think that there are two things that come to mind, first off, uh, you know, whether or not the town is sponsoring it, and as you pointed out, I mean, we're a smaller town, so we're not gonna have a, a facility, we have facilities here that we can let people use and things like that, and we've got, you know, other programs, like we have the library and things like that. So, so my, my concern would be, maybe, the question is, how do we do this? So part of it's information, part of it is activities. And, and so my thought would be, it could be, first off, you know, I don't know if you're planning on making an organization or, or a company out of it, if it was nonprofit, as many of these upper groups that we actually are partnering with, like the Friends of Library and the, the former dames and things like that, they're nonprofits and if you, you know, if you're, if you're gonna have anything that where you're collecting fees and things like that, then I would wanna see it as a nonprofit per se. Um, but another way to do it, to spread the information, to have, and to have meetings where you're talking to people or sponsoring cooking classes and things like that, working in conjunction with the library, perhaps might be through a committee where we would have, you know, I mean, we have lots of committees here. Uh, and, and if we were to have a committee on aging where we could have committee members and you'd have meetings and, and they would be publicly announced and things like that, I mean, that's, and make recommendations back to the council, that's one way, but the other way could be, you know, as I said, if you were going to establish a nonprofit that would be in information and, and things like that, then you, you would probably, if we want, if we, if we agreed, work with you like these other groups which have regular meetings in the park and, and, and they have their own advertising budgets and stuff like that, but, uh, but we give them the facilities at, at, uh, little, no cost and things like that, so that's, uh, my quick thoughts on, uh, just reading the staff report.
Okay, any other, do you want to respond?
I just, okay, that, that's, that was a good point.
Okay, great, mm-hmm.
I'll, I'll say something, I.
I mean, I think this is a very serious issue. And, uh, Atherton, you know, it is an aging community, um, be largely because of Prop thirteen, people stay here.
Now, some people would stay here anyway, but more people stay in their homes because of the tax situation.
Yes. Yes.
And, uh, we have, but Atherton, you know, because we're small, we're resource limited, we basically have some facilities in the park and what we're going to build here in this new civic center.
Yes.
Which, uh, I mean, this is exactly the kind of thing that we want to support, uh, because it's of interest to our residents. The big question I have in reading the staff report is how much actual interest is there, you know, I wanna, I, I mean, I, I would absolutely encourage you to build ASAP and see, and solicit people and see how many people are interested in, in, you know, uh, coming to your meeting or just expressing interest, uh, without knowing that it's very hard, I think, for us to do anything, that, that's kind of.
Yeah, was there any input back from putting this thing in the Athertonian?
Yes.
A couple of positive emails that the town received, I know Steve said he received a few.
You, you received emails?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I, I received, I probably lost count at about ten, uh, just because I didn't keep a, you know, detailed list, but all of the feedback I got was very positive, similar to what you folks are saying where it's serious, it's important, it's worthwhile, I'm interested, please keep me informed, I think the, so, sorry, I don't wanna get, is, is that, uh?
So, let's let, um, council, do you wanna make any progress?
Yeah.
Sure, I mean, I, I agree with largely, well, what people have been saying, it's serious, it's important, it's worthwhile, right?
Yeah.
I mean, and I think your vision is, is, um, uh, compelling, it's, it's an important thing. Um, you know, having said that, it, it sounds like, um, something that Carrie talked about, makes sense to me, we're talking about building trust. It sounds like you've got some, what I'll call baby steps or initial steps to take, you know, is there interest? You know, there's a lot of work to be done, I'd urge, you know, that, that, as we go through this process, I, um, if, if, if the town's gonna get involved in it, it's great to build in a process, as with these other organizations, where there's, the, the community's involved directly so that it's not so dependent on one person, there's kind of checks on what's going on out there, people are, are getting what they want because they're part of the decision-making process, it's an open, it's an open public process, which I think is important, um, so, you know, but, thank you, I'm gonna have to step you forward, thank you, and just having the interest is a wonderful thing and pushing everybody.
Can I offer, um, any comments from our finance committee?
Oh, yeah, I think you guys have pretty much said what I would have said, so.
Yeah, okay, Bob?
Well, the, the staff report indicates that basically the town had to commit to doing something as a part of our housing, uh.
Element, yeah, but, I don't think.
I mean, what is the something and what happens if we don't do something, it, it kinda sounds like we've said we're gonna do something and haven't done anything.
No, I.
Which isn't the most shocking thing.
Which defines the housing element.
Yeah, but I don't think it has to do with seniors, I mean, you know, the, the housing element.
It's all baked into it for us, it's exactly what it has to do with.
Yeah.
But, but we do have a, just to jump in, we, we do have a policy statement, uh, that says that we'll support a plan to uh, meet the growing needs of seniors.
Houses. Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's very, that's, it's as vague as that.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
This is the first time we've really had a discussion on this, I think it's, I think it's a really serious topic, it's a good discussion.
Yeah, yeah. I think that one of the things that would come back to us in, uh, response to the housing element would be, how do we, um, how do we deal with our, like, uh, accessory structures, you know, um, the pool houses where an aging parent could live, uh, if they aren't in a second dwelling unit, that is a legal second dwelling unit as it is now. I mean, could, I know that the, the pushback has always been for the accessory structures, the pool houses, uh, to not be, uh, used as any kind of a dwelling unit because of the potential loud parties, the noise, you know, renting to, um, Stanford students or something and then.
Or businesses, uh, workout teams.
Yeah, businesses, right, you know, and having excess noise, that if we kind of revisit that and say that, you know, for an aging parent or a caretaker to take care of the aging, uh, uh, resident in their own home, now that would be kind of a built-in source of additional housing.
If, if perhaps I could suggest the next step maybe for, for Steve, might be, you're, you're looking at an informational meeting to see what that level of interest might be. Maybe the town could co-host that meeting that would enable them to use the pavilion, put the word out there, see who shows up, see what the interest is, uh, in the community. And if there is interest, then we take the next step of seeing what's, what the possibilities might be.
I was gonna suggest the same thing, but I would also like to say, and things are a little scattered, I would like to say, s- could we see a business plan, give a timeframe for a business plan? And then exactly that, you know, at some point, you know, start the date where we can launch and say, to find out if there is interest.
I think some number four.
I don't know, I don't know.
I, I'm not sure, actually moving forward with a, a business or even a nonprofit, I think, I mean, maybe you could express it more detail.
A business thing, yeah.
Right, uh, I think that would come out of the group, you know, if there was a majority vote or huge interest in doing a Friends of Holbrook Palmer type format, yeah, then I, I, you know, that's what would happen, but we're not there yet.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Carrie, we're, we're, we're not even at the point of what do we do next.
Yeah.
My feeling is do the, exactly that, have a well-publicized, town-sponsored, uh, meeting. Make it as, as accessible as possible, um, and just go from there, we'll say the end.
Get a, get a feel for feel.
So my, so my, my reservation about that, um, I'll do your stack and see your trick for your suggestion.
Right.
So my, so my, my reservation about that, um, I'll do respect and see for your suggestion. Um, I think that, um, it gives the, um, unwritten kind of, uh, impression that, uh, the town is endorsing this and is sponsoring this. And in, in fact, having it in the Athertonian is kind of like a, 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 an endorsement already, uh, that the town has embraced this, uh, policy, this concept of creating this organization. Or, uh, uh, promoting this organization, and we're, I don't think we're there yet.
What about.
We have a, we had a meeting, I'm sorry, that was aged, it was more generic meeting, it was aged that, you know, concerns of seniors or interest, I don't know how we phrase it, but it was not, um, ASAP specific.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Uh, and ASAP may be one of the things to discuss the meeting, other things might be, but the point of the meeting is, you know, seniors, do you, is there something lacking that we can do?
And we can do that, and that can tie into our creating a plan to support the growing needs of the senior population.
Right, for them, for the housing, yeah.
Yeah, so we, our first, our first step is to see who comes to the meeting, and we can maybe work with Steve on, a- a- as well as the rest of us, to determine what an agenda might be and who else might be invited.
A discussion about that. Yeah, yeah.
So I would think the library, for example, would wanna participate in that.
Yeah.
Maybe we could have a meeting there.
S- so, yeah, so.
So, so I know that there is one resident close by, who when we were, when we were, uh, doing the housing element, you know, came and spoke about that, uh, very issue. Uh, and so, you know, I think if we couch it like that, I'm hesitant to endorse ASAP on its face right now, as, you know, this is something that we're deciding to do. I think that we need to kind of approach it from, um, another, um, direction, I think your idea's a good one.
I, I, I would, I, I will agree, I'm, I'm not, I think that this is our opportunity to figure out if we do have a need for what you could be an extension of in the future.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I think that bringing in a speaker or something like that would be an attract in, I mean, an aging in place or something, be an attract, and so our senior pop, a senior population could come to the building as a town event. And us getting a feeler, if this is, there's.
Probably get the library to, to do that.
That's exactly what I was gonna propose, the library funds for this kind of program.
Right.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it would be a. They could probably bring somebody in who would be, who you could help identify really a good person, bring somebody who'd be down.
I have Domino's in the park by the cafe. Domino's at the library desk, uh, at the cafe.
Well, like I said.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, exactly. I got some Domino's.
Don't get Domino's.
Well, no.
As a town, as a town event, a town event, and, sorry, Steve, not a Steve event, but us getting a feeler, if there's a need for someone.
Right. But, but he would be there, he could participate and contribute.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the, the mayor is short of a citizens committee, which can be challenging, uh, the mayor has the ability to appoint a member or two of the city council, who might be interested in helping shape what this looks like, would you be interested in doing that?
Yes, yes.
The two eldest of the council?
Would, would, would other council? The two elders council at hers, well, that would be me.
Yeah.
How old are you?
Yeah.
He's six months younger than me.
Or, listen. How old are you?
Not as old as her.
He's six.
What is the number, what's the number?
It's, it's not there.
It's up there.
I mean, I'll go pull your stuff with your.
But you know what?
It's gonna change. I'll turn on the camera, then I'll answer, and then turn the camera back on, is that what we're gonna do?
It's gonna change pretty soon.
Oh, really?
Yep, yep, his birthday's coming up.
Birthday.
Oh, and then you're gonna be equal?
And they will be equal.
I think that's a good way to do it.
We will never be equal, I have to say, we'll never be his equal.
How old are you?
I'm old.
What was this happened?
No, yeah. I think, I, I think he should do it.
Yeah, that'd be fun.
I think that's a good idea.
But.
The two oldest people.
I should do it.
You should, I think we should have Leopards on, he seems pretty old.
Yeah, leopard.
And we could have him, and we could have you too.
He seems pretty young.
Yeah, I'm probably the oldest, but you guys.
But he's still young, he's been here so long.
Well, I'm trying to get used to the committee members.
I've already made a clear pay my capital gains tax and I'm gone.
Now, that's, that is, that is the, that's the conundrum, isn't it, the capital gains tax for the seniors, yeah, yeah, and you kind of become house-trapped, and, you know, it's really hard.
Oh, it's huge, huge.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And then if you don't have, you know, they don't, go ahead, yes.
I was just gonna say, if you wanna get trapped, this is a good place to be trapped, see?
Yeah.
But, but, but you need to have caretakers, or you need, you know, have a family member come in and live, and maybe it's not a room, and then get, so, okay, um.
It's a good way to do it.
Is that, is that, is that like we're making a little, some progress, just sort of?
Subcommittee to work with Steve and the library? Subcommittee to work with Steve and the library is that you and.
And Rick?
And Rick, okay.
All right.
Seriously?
Do you want, do you want to?
Is that a conflict with, 'cause it most likely is it?
Yeah.
No, no.
Okay.
You might be off the hook.
Okay, all right, I mean, you gotta do it, the two oldest people will be great.
Are you? I should get my husband, he's billion old.
So, wait. Are we, are we, or you go to the closed session?
We're about, yes, we're gonna go to, we're gonna go to closed session, okay, so based on everything, thank you very much, thank you, thank you for your, uh, for.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, thanks for your.
We'll be in touch with the subcommittee.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone, thank you.
I'm going to close the meeting, uh, the regular, um, uh, meeting, and let the, um, my guests out, we will say goodbye.
Are we welcome, are we? Thank you, gentlemen.
Over there, thank you.
I love you guys, always do.
Thank you, thank you very much, and we're going to open to a closed session, we have to go across the street.